This should go pretty good tonight, right? Good.
All set. Welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting for March 17, 2014. Mr. Clark, would you read us the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Now, on the agenda tonight, just one thing. It's May 5th Annual Special Town Meeting Inserting Warrants. Before we do that, just something happened over the weekend that I want to speak about briefly. It has to do with the 300th anniversary, and it's great news, and I'll read it in a second, but just for an update. In the Light and Water Bills that went out, I think last month, there was a small letter in there asking for possible donations of any size, and I'm happy to report that the 300th Committee has had checks for 25, 50, 100, and so forth, and just for that one letter, we're up to about $4,000 in donations, just in that one letter, so that's worked out really well. And we're still working on different companies, and they'll be mentioned later on, but there's two things I want to mention before we get on to the meeting. There's two charitable funds that have made sizable donations, one being the Vincent Cooper Fund, which in two different times has donated $5,000. And then I have a letter here, and it's from the John and Eunice Morrison Charitable Foundation, and it was brought to Millie McGovern. If anyone doesn't know Millie in town, she's been a town supporter forever and ever, the family has been. Her husband is a former selectman, late husband's former selectman, and knocking on the door and presented this letter, and this is what the letter reads. Dear Miss McGovern, enclosed, please find a check for $10,000 for a donation towards the 300th celebration. Recognizing the long history John Morrison and Eunice Morrison had with the town of Littleton, as well as both your husband and your son, you Paul, and trustees of the John and Eunice Morrison Foundation feel that this donation is warranted. The trustees further feel that you are the most appropriate person to receive the same. Needless to say, you are and always have been one of the joys and treasures of the town of Littleton. Please enjoy the celebration and always know that your good works are recognized and remembered. Signed, Peter Sorgi trustee, A. Dennis Barbo trustee, and James G. Walsh III trustee. And I just wanted to read that. What a tribute to Millie. People know her from being recently the crossing guard in the football games and the baseball games, so when you get something like that, it should be recognized. It certainly put a smile on her face the other day when she brought to the office, so.
Fantastic.
We're here mainly for one reason, and that's to go over the insertion of articles onto the town meeting, and Keith, you want to take part of this?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. The warrant closes this Friday at noon, and I appreciate the board holding this special meeting tonight to make sure that we get the warrant, by the way, and all of the remaining articles that we were not able to get to, the lateness of our meeting last week. I'd suggest that if we, it won't take long, I think, if we started with the Special Town Meeting article and then go through the list of ones that are in the annual, there's one left to be inserted in the Special Town Meeting. It's a request of the Board of Water Commissioners to put an article in so that they can access some, a grant, a reimbursable grant under DEP's Sustainable Water Management Initiative. It's put in the special warrant because it will be acted on prior to July 1st, prior to the beginning of the new fiscal year, so business that happens in the current year, we put in the special warrant. So the request is to insert that article. The funding source for the article will be the Water Enterprise Funds on unreserved balance, so it's, they'll essentially be using monies from their own source, and then they get reimbursed, so there's no impact on the general fund.
All right, do we have any questions?
Sustainable water, it's a good thing.
Anyone in the audience?
Nope. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to insert the following article onto the warrant of the May 5th, 2014 Special Town Meeting, subject to the approval as to form by Town Council, DEP Sustainable Water Management Initiative.
Seconded. It's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you can answer this. Town meeting.
Thank you. In the annual town meeting, there are just a handful of articles to go through, and I'd suggest that we just take them in the order in which they're, the very next article is another Water Department, one, they're finishing up their budget for the Enterprise Fund, and we will be, we will be including that in the warrant. We don't have their final figures now, but we will get them by Friday for, I think we may get them in the next day or two, but we do need to include their article in the warrant.
Now, do we have to go through each one of these one at a time?
I can, you don't need a separate vote. Why don't I just, I'll talk you through each one, and then that way you can take.
I have one question on this. The Commissioners are working on this now, or they already been working on it?
Yeah.
So that's Article 5?
That's right, Article 5 in this proposal. So once, so with the boards inserting it, the article, it will include the numbers that they supply us with in the next couple of days, they're finalizing it now.
Is this a new format?
It's, it is almost new that the, in prior years, that they've only shown one year worth of data instead of two, that is the current year and the proposed new year. Editorially, I added the current year for comparison in the Town Meeting booklet that was printed last year. It's just helpful for people to be able to see by how much the budget is changing. We do that with our budgets, and so we'll present the Water Enterprise Fund in the same way.
I like it.
And editorially, we'll do it with the Park and Rec as well. What we have, the next article is the Enterprise Fund for Park and Recreation. We voted last November at Town Meeting to create an Enterprise Fund for Park and Rec. That was one of the recommendations of our auditor, and that allows us to show what the general fund level of support is for the enterprise. It also gives them greater flexibility than having the, you know, dozen or so revolving funds that they operated under. This is a much better way to run the railroad. So we have their request for fiscal 2015, which will be in the warrant. I have, for editorial purposes, a comparison of what their 2014 spending is, which we can show in the booklet for Town Meeting, but we haven't actually adopted, in 2014, it's not an Enterprise Fund, so there are going to be some differences, but we'll put that information in there so the public, so the public has it.
Bottom line's the bottom line, right?
Yeah. Next is the series of capital projects that are recommended, and this one, I've got some additional information to show. We had the list of projects that Bonnie had recommended that we reviewed at prior meetings. The one with, the one item with new information is Item Roman numeral 5, Facilities and Infrastructure, Item A, Facility Study Recommendations, and what we would like to do is to, well, Bonnie had earmarked 453,000 and change that would be available for that purpose. I wanted to share the, I'll put it on the screen, the recommendations that we now have from the Facility Assessment Prioritization Working Group, and you can, you can see the bottom line numbers here, and I'll go up, scroll up to the top in the middle in a minute, but there are $257,000 worth of school-related facility projects, and I'll scroll up in a moment. For the Town Hall projects, there is a, I'll point to the number of 258,240 as essentially being the, what's left over as the net amount, if you take out what Steve Moore had described as wish list items. On first blush, if you look at what the total recommendations for school projects are, and I can just, I'll just scroll up and see, it's a, it's a long list. It addresses a lot of needed items, even if some of them are kind of small for each of the various buildings, and then if you get down to.
And it should be noted that these, the list that we're looking at right now is actually three years. Was it 13, 14, 15, right? 13, 14, 15. Now, those are calendar years?
Yeah.
So when we, when we start talking budgetary-wise, you know, we had to say, okay, is it fiscal year or calendar year? The report was done by calendar year, so when we talk 15, it's actually calendar year 15, in essence, halfway through fiscal year, 15. So.
We're trying to do an awful lot with.
Correct. So that means that in fiscal year 16, we're going to look back to January and go to December of 16 for fiscal year 16, just a little point of clarification. But there's three years of projects here, and, you know, we, the group worked very hard to look through the masses of these projects, and I know PJ is Chair of the School Committee. I thought the working group went very well.
Yes. And this did follow the system that the committee, the working group showed us last week of prioritizing code issues and safety and, you know.
Life safety issues, correct.
And those things above, above the, way above the cosmetic, or, so this really is, it's a prioritized list. If you look at what the total are of all of the recommended projects on the list, the grand total comes up to 555,000, which is about $100,000 more than the number that Bonnie had earmarked. If she had 453, and this is 555, we're about 100. Those two differ by about 100,000. One of these, and Bonnie was out today, so I couldn't, so I couldn't confirm the number, but one of the projects on the recommended list is 140,500 for the Council on Aging diner improvements. We have some monies left over in an article. Originally, it was appropriated $35,000 a couple of years ago. There's a balance in there, I don't know, 25 or something.
I thought it was 50,000. I thought we were talking 50,000.
I thought it was 35,000.
Do you remember?
But, yeah, Bonnie would have what the net amount is that's available, so that just for starters, let's say it's, let's say it's 25,000 that's in there. If you've got 100,000 over the budget, and you've got 25,000, you can deduct from that, then the difference is about $75,000. So if you wanted to do all of the projects that are shown in yellow here, we'd need to find about $75,000 from another source. The logical one would seem to be the Capital Stabilization Fund, if you wanted to tap into it. We haven't tapped into it yet, but that is one of the reasons why it's there. If you don't want to do that, then, or to that extent, then another thing to do is to not include the $39,000 worth of so-called wish list items, which are, which Steve Moore showed in brown, so it's some of the things like, you know, resurfacing the tennis courts and other, other, all these lower priority items that are in brown. So that's, that's sort of a qualitative choice, and I'd suggest that there's, there's two questions for, well, there's one question for today. If you, if you think you might want to do the whole list and work out what the funding plan is, then vote to insert the whole list in the warrant, and then we can work out the details in the next couple of weeks when we're making recommendations on this. If you don't want to go there for starters and just want to have the list be those projects which are, which are net of the wish list, then I'd say take off the ones that are shaded in brown, and we'll just put the balance in. All we're doing is putting it, I mean, in the past, we put articles in, projects in, and then when it comes to the motion on the floor, some of them might be in a lower amount, or we might delete some of them. In fairness to the, in fairness to the process that's happened thus far, which has been a lot of work in a short period of time, if the, if there's, if you want to be able to have further discussions about all those projects there, then we should put them on the warrant and then fine-tune which ones we can either afford, if we can find, you know, if we're, if, say, the FinCom is agreeable to tap into capital stabilization, then you could afford to do more of those, and if you don't reach an agreement on that, then you can, then you can cut some of the projects out.
Well, perspective of the working group, I think it was the consensus of the group that, you know, the projects that we felt brought forward, those quote-unquote wish list items may have been, they have, what was it, the?
Remaining useful life?
Remaining useful life. It had number of years, and some of those were zero, so they needed to be addressed. I know specifically, as you pointed out, the resurfacing of the asphalt tennis court, there was a zero on that, so it needed to be addressed. It could be dangerous to, you know, kids playing tennis out there. So, and some of the air handles in this building here were, you know, they said one light, one year, but going back to 2013, and here we are, looking at 2014 and 15, so, you know, they've expired too. And it was the thought of the group, and jump in PJ whenever you think you need to, that if we can get into the stabilization fund, based on that big list, to get it down to the 555-537 would be good for the town and, you know, we would be pretty much clean to date for the last three years in any maintenance that was brought up in this project, so that was the feeling of the group.
So, in all honesty, some of the ones you just talked about, you call it a wish list, it's really not a.
You know, you have to make decisions, you know, and, you know, if, you know, the, some of the, the air handling units, they're functioning now. It's like you put it on, and it's either going to work or it's not, type of situation we're in right now. So, you know, because they're functioning, I think that's why they were categorized as quote-unquote a wish list, but.
Yeah, I would not have characterized it that way.
Yeah, I wouldn't have characterized it.
Wish.
Yeah.
These are needs, like the air handlers, for example, on the top of this building. We originally started with one, and we started playing with the numbers, and let's go for all three of them up there. That's why you see three separate lines for those. Two of them are gray, are browned out. And really, what we went through was the Council on Aging, the kitchen was important to everybody in the room that evening, and how do we handle that? Whether it's 25,000, 30,000, there was some number like that that was in the back of our heads, to offset that 140 to some degree. And then, as Keith and Jim had mentioned, you know, the stabilization fund didn't come up, there's one possible source of that, and, you know, you're all's decision. And frankly, we were prepared to, you said no to that, and we're prepared to talk with you and reduce the list as necessary to get it within the budget.
And FinCom, I mean, FinCom's a power, too, so, I mean, it's.
So the safest way to preserve our options is to put that entire list, we'll put that entire list in the warrant, and then we will fine-tune what our recommendations are as we get closer to Town Meeting.
I have a couple of questions here. Two of you are on that committee, right? What, what do the numbers look like for next year?
Bigger, Alex.
Yeah, moving out, I mean, that's a topic for our next discussion. There are.
I'm just looking for something relative to like this year.
Right, right. The, and again, this is through 15, so it's actually fiscal year 16, that's why I said that. So we'd be talking fiscal year 16, but the first half of calendar year 15. I mean, the first, the first half of calendar year 16, because this is 13, 14, and 15 calendar years. So fiscal year 16, from January of 16 to June of 16 is covered in this budget, because this is actually fiscal year 15 budget. You see what I'm saying? So calendar year, so that, that will be fiscal year 16. Go ahead.
Yeah, much more. This was the summary that Bonnie had prepared. In essence, what we were doing here just now is these three, these are the three years that the working group just looked at, and is essentially taking that total, which is, looks like it's about 2 million worth of projects over the, over 13, 14, 15, which you've culled down to 555,000. And then next year, it's, next year's total of the things in the queue are 1.2 million, although it.
Plus what we don't do this year?
Correct.
Right.
But, yeah, yeah. But these numbers can, are very deceiving as we work through them. They may have something listed on there, I'm thinking maybe the heaters, I remember some boilers that, you know, were functioning well. They list them on there because it's a, what do they call it, a building systems, is what we categorized it as, and it would be, you know, it may have had within that parameter of, let's say, 16, but there's really no need to do it, but they have to list it in there.
Listed through that remaining useful life, based on, you know, industry standards, but some because of redundancy of systems, we may allow something to failure before replacing it, because it'd be unnecessary to replace it while it's still functioning, given that there may be some redundancy in them.
So those numbers can be deceiving, but there were some big-ticket items. I think there was a roof on one of the schools, but that's going to be our next meeting, is to figure out how we're going to fund and what we're going to look at moving, and come back to this board with a recommendation as to how we're going to handle it.
But with raw information, you essentially have 1.2 million on the schedule, plus 500,000 of that didn't make, that won't make it in this year's cut. Is that correct? I'm trying, are we having a compounding effect? I think that's what I'm trying to.
I would call it compounding, but it exists.
Yeah.
And these are things that have been, you know, bypassed previously, and we haven't always addressed them. This is now helping us, you know, see it out there, right there, plain sight on the television, so that we know what it is. Before, we knew we had all this equipment and property in town, but in one source, one location, to be able to define it all, we didn't have that, as you know, and now this does that for us. Compounding's not an unfair word to use, because, except roughly 1.5 or so, 1.4 million this year, these three years, 13, 14, 15, that won't be funded, and now we're looking at 1.2 next year, so you could say, well, yeah, now we're up to 2.7. But if we look at the entire year looking out, we already had that anyway.
So I guess that begs the question, the stuff that we don't get to, I mean, we culled it down to the list that's in front of us.
And I got a little example, too.
Yeah, okay, that's.
Yep.
I'm just trying to get.
I know, I know. It's confusing when you have those numbers.
So do these essentially drop off? What?
I'll give you an example.
It doesn't sound like you're rolling it forward, but are these just basically called out as some other time and not necessarily next on the list?
Here's an example that was, and I can't remember where it was, there was a fire alarm piano. Absolutely functioning, in good. panel, absolutely functioning, in good shape, there were no issues with it, I'm sorry, that's where it was. And they had pictures of it, everything was fine, it's totally functioning, but they said, hey, it should be replaced, or the use of life has been over 15 years or whatever, and it was there, but it's completely functional. It's up to code, everything is fine. But they listed it because of the life expectancy of it. Well, it's functioning and it's fine, it's, there's nothing wrong with it, so why replace it? So, that's just one example of some of the stuff.
That's a great example. So what happens when that time comes? Where, is it, does it go back into reevaluation? How is it handled?
Every year, every year. I mean, I think a good way to look at it is in comparison to the way we leave roadway improvement plan, where we're always gonna have a million dollars more in need than we have in funds, but we prioritize and redo those priorities every year or so. That, just because a project was listed in the plan, that it had to get done in year two, let's say, and we go past, and we're on to year four, and we didn't do it, doesn't mean it doesn't ever get done, it means that we just have to go through a process of updating the priorities.
Just like with the '13, '14, '15 this year, I anticipate next year's '13, '14, '15, '16.
Sure.
Okay.
And Alex, I, one other point is, if, let's say that does fail, because you know as well as I do, electronics, either work or they don't, so if it does fail, then the town has to make a decision, do we go through our emergency funds, or how do we replace something that, which is a life, was listed as a life safety category, how do we deal with that?
They have one thunderstorm in the middle of summer.
Exactly. There you go, there you go. So, that's, so when you see those big numbers up there, it is kind of overwhelming, but as we sat down and went through this big spreadsheet, line by line, project by project, and made discussion and had discussion about, okay, they listed this fire alarm panel in Hope, and they said it was in good condition, but yet it was in there to, with a number next to it, for replacement cost. So those are the times, types of things going over. So when you look at 1.2 million, there's 1.2 million out there?
I get it, I get it. So what is the current balance of our capital?
Stabilization fund.
Stabilization.
196.
197.
And what do we schedule to put in it every year?
1%.
And I think Bonnie has maybe 15.
It's 1% of whatever we pay on our capital equipment.
So we're gonna...
Is what it's programmed for.
Okay. So we're clearly gonna lower the balance of that, if we use that strat.
If you take out dollars, that's gonna lower the balance, yeah.
Well, I was thinking, how much we put in versus how much we take out.
Punishment versus depletion, yeah.
So, we're spending, what, three points, what's it, 1.375, is that what we're spending on the capital this year? 1% of that, what is that?
So has the finance, have our finance team members written a policy on the, I don't recall whether there's a policy on the use of the capital stabilization fund?
Yeah, it's up there, it's in the fiscal policies.
Does it define how we're supposed to use it?
Yeah, it takes two votes, right? It's a, I know it takes two votes.
Selectmen and FinCom, maybe?
No, it's a town meeting vote, it's a town meeting vote to take it out.
Okay.
But it's two town meetings? It slips my mind right now. No, I think it's a vote of this board, and then to the town meeting.
So it'll, if we do that, it'll be a stand, will it be standalone, will it be a own separate article, will it have to be at that point?
It would have to be, yes.
Because we don't have permission for that.
What's the question?
To get it out of the stabilization fund. You need a vote to get it out of the stabilization.
Well, you need, yeah, you need a vote, it'll be in the motion, it'll be a two-thirds vote.
Right.
That don't need a separate article.
But you can do it embedded in the motion, like we have?
Yep.
But that means the entire motion has to be two-thirds.
Yep.
Okay.
Unless we parse it. I mean, we usually get a unanimous vote on the capital project.
But...
Mows.
But... So for the sake of this meeting, I would suggest we include everything for now, and... I agree.
Yeah, I wanted to understand a little better, and, you know, I obviously have a level of concern about going into our capital reserves, but we should preserve this for further discussion, so I have to agree.
I agree.
Okay, so we'll include the $555,000 worth of projects in the warrant. Next, we have, let's see, the next article to insert is the Community Preservation Committee's budget request. Theirs total of $563,000. This, under the statute, only the Community Preservation Committee has standing to bring recommendations to town meeting. They, they're the gatekeeper. Under our policy, though, typically, after they give us the article for the warrant, both the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee would feel free to adopt your own recommendations on those articles. It's a long list, and to my understanding, it commits all of the, all of the funds that are available in the Community Preservation Fund right now.
Please, right out?
Yep.
Really? And what will we, what would, will the replenishment be about?
Well, every year, we'll take in another, it's about two, well, I think the budget is about, it was 150 before we switched, before we added the commercial to the base, so it's probably around $200,000.
I think it's a little over three-year.
So that will be what comes in annually, and then if we, and then if the amendment to the CPA passes on the ballot question, then that would give the town the opportunity to pump other local funds, whether it's, you know, cell tower funds or whatever, into the CPA fund to increase the base for state match.
So debt service, it looks like, right now, you're at $120,000, $130,000, $140,000, $141,000?
It's gonna include the borrowing we're gonna do for the Church Meadows property.
Is that included in this?
Yeah.
It is. So the $150,000 per year is pretty much going to debt service then?
So that means that this, that we're gonna, we're gonna have, this account, it's gonna stay empty.
Pretty much.
Because the debts, everything that comes in is gonna pay debt service.
The church meadows are a five-year period also, so it's a little accelerated, so...
The other ones borrowed for longer periods.
Yes.
That are declining, of course, but...
Well, I think this is a careful consideration, but we ought to let the voters decide.
So we can plan to have the Community Preservation Committee come in and brief us on their projects, so that when we're putting in what your recommendations are in FinComs, that it's based on your having had a chance to talk to them? That this is what they've given to us to put in the warrant?
I think it's a pretty good idea, because we're pretty much, we're done.
Yeah.
All our, all the goals and everything we're shooting for come to a screeching halt.
Actually, no, because we were just saying 200,000, is that what, is that what you're estimating coming in with the 200? Over 200, so it's about 100 and, right now, this, in the fiscal year 2015, debt service is 130, 40,000, so we'd have 50,000 in the black coming in every year, because it's only 150 right now. And, you know, the recommendation to...
Take a few years before they can really...
Well, you know, what we have to do is just say, you know, no more debt service, you know? That's all. That's what we say is...
What it also...
Debt service as in right now, until some...
I think what it also says is that if we're, if we're in any doubt about whether we ought to try to find a way to make use of the fact that you can get state matching funds, if you put local funds into the CPA fund, that that can bring in, you know, right now, it might be around 30 cents on the dollar. This year, actually, the number was up to 53 cents on the dollar, but that was a one-time thing of state matching funds, typically it'd be closer to 30 cents. But, but, you know, 30 cents on the dollar and coming back from the investment, the only, the only thing you have to convince yourself is, do we have the need for projects that could get funded by the CPA, to, do we have enough need that it's worth finding which local revenues we can move from where it is into the CPA fund? And to the extent that we're tapped out, just based on, you know, existing projects, yet we know that there will be other opportunities in the future for other things, probably says that it's worthwhile to figure out...
Great discussion for another day, though.
Yeah.
It sure is.
Yeah, because we still have to do, we got to talk with these folks.
No, absolutely.
So we'll plan to bring them in in the next, next month or so, as we develop our Next article is Neshoba Valley Tech, it appears as Article 12 in the strap one. Neshoba Valley Tech High School Accelerated Roof Repair Project. And it's not that they do the roof quickly, it's that the reimbursement is accelerated. But what the Neshoba Tech District is asking is that, they have a $2.8 million roof repair project, it will be paid for by borrowing. The borrowing costs will then be apportioned, and it would be tacked on, whatever each community, member community's share is, it gets tacked on to your assessment over whatever period of time they borrow. And what they need to get is the votes from each of the member districts in order to authorize that they do get 52.26% MSBA funding for the project, the roof is in need of repair. I'd suggest that this also be one of those ones where, let's put it in the warrant, and then have, and then have the superintendent from Neshoba Valley Tech come and brief us on the project. In fact, where their school committee is, as we speak, they are finalizing the number, but I asked them, please give it to me, because my warrant closes this Friday.
For the assessment, or for this project?
For the, well, the assessment won't be known for, we won't have the assessment figure until, I don't know, at least next year, because they haven't, they haven't incurred the cost. We had done a quick calculation, though, on what our share is, it's, we're talking, you know, it's, my recollection was it was under $10,000 a year, maybe just a couple of thousand dollars. It doesn't amount to, you know, if we were in Chelmsford, we would be having a different discussion right now, but we're Littleton, and we don't have as large an enrollment as some of the other member communities do, so our share is not as, is not as great. But we do need to put it in the warrant, we can, we can talk to the school folks about the project, and it'll be dealt with come the town meeting as well.
Maybe can you have our representative come in, too?
Sure, yeah.
Superintendent comes in?
We sure will. Next is the Kimball Trust School Grant Funds article, it's in 20,000, the amount of $20,000 this year, and it is for funding biology and U.S. history programs at the high school, and it's been recommended by the trust fund. It was requested by the school department, and it's been recommended by the trust fund commissioners, so we want to include that. Senior Work Program article, I double-checked, we had not voted, I didn't have a check mark next to it yet, we have not voted this number yet, but we should certainly include this article, it's the same number as this year, 55,000. We had some discussion about increasing it, but we hadn't really had that, it had not been in express need from the COA, so my suggestion would be we keep it at the same number.
Yeah, I think the reason we didn't vote it, we were waiting to hear what the real number, you know, what number, what they thought of the number.
Yeah, yeah, and I think I'd explained it before, that what we tried this year for the first time was oversubscription, if you will, overbooking, that were in the past. If the number was $50,000, they divided up, 50, they'd take the number of subscribers and divide up 50,000, and then as people dropped out, they didn't spend all the money, so we're down to, you know, 42, 43,000. So Pamela Campbell looked at how we'd done over the prior years, we agreed to overbook at 102% or thereabouts, and so that as people dropped out of the program, as has happened again, then we'll, we'll spend closer to the target number, so...
Get more opportunity.
So we're coming, yeah, so we'll come in on target, and I think this is a good number for another year. Okay, next, Long Lake Park consolidation, and this, you get a graphic.
What, when we came in on, right?
What number is it?
This is...
Twenty.
Nope, twenty. And just as, as we're passing by an article, even though you, well, you've already put it in, in Article 17, the medical marijuana, I just wanted to reassure you.
There you go.
I just wanted to reassure you that the district that has been, that the planning board had its public hearing last Thursday night, that's where I went after I left the school committee meeting earlier, was, and so, there was some concern about including the Nagog Hill Orchard in the draft text of where the registered marijuana dispensary overlay district would be. So they took that out, so you don't see it, what you see are the industrial A properties, essentially north of, you know, northwest of 495, and a few here at the crossroads. So those industrial A properties, plus the police station property, and that's, that's the, that's where the district is now. If you look at, if you look at the areas in red shown here, this is not an official map, it's for illustrative purposes, but there are certain uses that you will have to be 100 and, you will have to be 1,500 feet away from, schools, other places where children congregate and so forth. So when you, when you plot what those uses are currently, and then show the area around it, then you, then you get, you get these images. So at the end of the day, even if you're in one of the zoning areas that allow it, even if you're in like a 1A, if you're, or an A, or industrial A, that if you're within the radius area, then you can't, then the use can't be allowed. So there's, but there's still enough landmass that would be permissible in the industrial A area, and screened out for the distance from the, from the excluded uses, that it looks like it should pass.
And it should be noted that this, the area that's proposed is required by law.
We have to have something.
You have to have something.
We can't have it excluded.
You can't close down the whole town, so...
Yeah, the planning board had initially included industrial B zone as well, and we had heard from a lot of residents at the hearing last Thursday who were in industrial B, so they took it out. So the planning board is going to town meeting only with some industrial A properties, not, I mean, there's some, as I recall down here, those were taken out. But the ones you see here, minus the screened areas, that would be the, that would be the RMD overlay district. So I know there've been some concerns that have been expressed to this board, and I just wanted to be able to update you on that. Okay, next is the Long Lake, this is, Article 20, Long Lake Park consolidation. And we heard a presentation a few weeks ago from Littleton Conservation Trust, staff met with Rick Finley, we had this reviewed by town council, and what the, and what the proposal is, is to take those properties, and actually, I think we're, I'm gonna have to change the map based on some leaked filed information from town council, but the, what this map shows, the green areas are already owned by the Conservation Commission, that they are already part of the Long Lake Park so-called. It's these ones that appear... It's these ones that appear here in pink and orange that are owned by the town, either gifted properties or tax titled properties, which would be, which are owned by the town, which would be transferred to the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission. So all of these colored properties here are town-owned, it's just at the end of the day, they would all be green, if you will, because they'd all be under the care, custody, and control of conservation. And so that's the, that's the proposal. It would require two-thirds of town meeting. I just got information at the end of the day today from town council that they had finished their research of all the deeds in the registry, and a couple of them that we thought were gifts turned out to be tax titled properties or something. So we'll make sure that the map matches what, the legal research the town council has done on that.
Look, that's one strange lot that is all shoreline. Right there, right through there, and all the way down, just...
Yeah, it's town, it's town-owned, but, and according to this, at least it was gifted, but I need to double-check that against the list the town council has, so. Some of the properties look like gifts, but they were actually tax titled, you know, gift items, so. All right, so we've got that. Then the last, and certainly not least, article to, to insert our amendments to the Personnel Bylaw. And Personnel Board Chair Joe Gaffney is back with us. We actually have, we actually have four members of the Personnel Board here. Steve Benudie is on it, as am I and Alex. We're just a chance social gathering, though. We're not posted, but we're here at your meeting and you're posted.
We're not deliberating.
And we're not, right, not deliberating. We've already deliberated in presenting this list. Once again, we are not presenting amendments to the salary schedule, to the compensation plan, that is. The numbers that we adopted at town meeting in November a year ago are good until the end of, the end of next year. So, so we are not bringing anything back there. We did, though, spend quite a bit of time on some of the tasks that the selectmen had given us, looking at, you know, hiring, to look at a hiring plan. We had some issues that, that our advisors, Jack Dolan, had identified for us to make sure that we're handling overtime and comp time in the appropriate way. And, and we also have incorporated the military leave language that the selectmen had, had addressed with the, with the police contract last, last spring. So it was, it was sort of a laborious, arduous task, but in going through this, but what we found that we needed to do is to make sure that any of the definitions we were using were saying what we meant them to say. We rely a lot on, on Jack Dolan and his help in a lot of, in a lot of these issues. We're going for, you know, to make sure that we're, we're in compliance with the Federal Fair Labor Standards Act. I don't know if Joe or anyone wants to just further summarize...
You said earlier, Joe, it was just a housekeeping type of...
Right, there's no salary, as Keith had mentioned. It is language that, you know, is reflective of the hiring policy that, you know, you had requested. It's, you know, looking at some of the classifications that we now, you know, over the years have added more schedules, before we referred to it as Schedule A, that it really is A through D, things of that nature. We, you know, did look at, one of the items that you had also asked us to look at was titled the succession planning. And as we got into succession planning, it is definitely a specific technique that we are looking at as workforce development. So we came up with a broad statement, one of the tools underneath that broad statement, and, you know, it's, the definition is in here, workforce development, could be succession planning. But instead of just pinpointing one, we said, this is an ongoing, everyday activity for every department, for every manager, for all employees to be ready with, you know, movable skills, so to speak, or updated skills. And that's, you know, and as Keith mentioned, military leave is just reflective of what was asked of us, taking the contract words that you would use. And then the other is Jack putting us into, you know, legal compliance with burpees that keeps changing, and especially how we handle overtime or compensatory time.
Moving through the files.
Yep.
So that's it. And the board is ready? It was a, all right. Moving to the Board of Selectmen vote to insert the following articles onto the warrant of the May 5, 2014 town meeting, subject to approval as to form by town council. The annual town meeting. Article 5, fiscal year 2015 Water Enterprise Fund operating budget. Article 6, 2015 Park and Recreation Enterprise Fund operating budget. Article 7, 2015 capital items from available funds. Article 8, 2015 Community Preservation Budget. Article 12, the Shoba Valley Tech High School Accelerated Roof Project. Article 13, M.H. Kimball Trust School Grant Funds. Article 14, Senior Work Program. Article 20, Long Lake Park Lot Consolidation. And Article 24, Personnel Bylaw Amendments.
Second.
It's the moving second, any further discussion? So you're done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Or opposed? That's it. Make a motion to adjourn. Happy St. Patrick's Day. Is there a second on that?
Yes, second.
Moving the second, do we draw it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We don't have it anymore.
Something, it doesn't have it?
No, something, it doesn't, it doesn't have it anymore.